Yes.
All right, hello. Okay, so we're actually starting with the Housing Authority separately. So I'm going to go ahead and hand over the reins to Chair Bowie. Is that right? You do Housing?
Yes.
Okay, so ask you to go ahead and open up the Housing Authority, take roll and dive into that.
Sure. Okay. I now open the Housing Authority meetings. Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Commissioner Beckles? Commissioner Beckles?
Yes, I'm here.
Commissioner Bridgum?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Solario?
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Chair Bowie?
Here. I now open oral communication. Any people from the public would like to address the Housing Authority. And I would like to remind that this is, this oral communication is only for the Housing Authority matter only. Madam Clerk, if anyone who would like to speak.
There are no speakers for the Housing Authority.
I see. So we now close oral communication and move to consent items, the three items on the consent. Do I have the motion?
I'll move the consent. I'll move the consent items, O'Neil.
Anyone second it?
Second it. Deidre.
Please go for the vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridgum?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Solario?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Moving on to matter from the chairs. Anyone? I now hitting on, so I now attend the Housing Authority meetings and back to the City Council. Take a chance.
Thank you. Mayor Steve Jones here. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, Meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Bridgum?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. Mayor Protem O'Neil, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. If you would all please stand, face the flag if it's near you, put your hand over your heart, and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated, everyone. Okay. With that, we're going to open oral communications for all, I believe. Madam Clerk, do we have any oral communication speakers over at the meeting center?
Yes, we do. Tonight, we have three speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Craig Durfee. After Mr. Durfee is Jacqueline Doe. And then after Jacqueline Doe is Andrew Nguyen.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead and get started.
Honorable Mayor and Councilors, Mr. Durfee, just for the residents of Garden Grove, the founder of Parents' Rights to Develop Children. Much of work's been done, much written has been provided you. And I'd like to, first of all, in closing for tonight, to remember the nine Marines that were honored yesterday in the Red Street Paper. Second of all, I'd like to take the 2012 that provided of both Mayors Broadwater and Dalton. I'd like to quote, "There are people who put their lives on the line," quote said Dalton, the city's ongoing mayor. There's nothing that we shouldn't do for our veterans," I quote. Further goes into Broadwater, quote, "Museums are expensive," City Council member Bruce Paulard comma, who sits on the Board of Vietnam War Memorial Foundation and is already veteran comma. Still, one day, he expects it will open, drawing crowds, those who have served and those who want to know more about the meaning of service. This is your master plan, is an anchor. And I would encourage the foundation that you're on, Police Chief, and Stephanie, who's the neighbor association, to put it on the agenda and get your planning people and your other people who need to get together and create that first 90 feet because you're really, I have the master plan or the plans for the trees, it gets smothered. Unless you use conservatively your funds and put it where they need to be, you're going to have to restore the area in terms of where the trees are irrigation. I encourage that. I'd like to quote from Ronald Reagan, "We are forever indebted to those who are, those who have given their lives that we might be free." Obviously, there's a reason tonight I'm here. Youth Commission can be with the RLC. I envisioned this when I started, the idea with the, talking to a veteran who's afraid to commit suicide. Right 50 miles a day to bring the West together with the East workers is a perfect fit. I would encourage you to create this Youth Commission based on the grants and my recommendations because the product, what you have is a flawed presentation. We should have a Youth Commission that will be a RLC with your staff who are veterans themselves. As a mayor, you worked with Dalton and Broadwater for the Purple Heart Initiative. I would ask you to restore that. The next thing is, I submitted a letter to you regarding the Planning Commission technical issues to get the doctor there. I'd ask you to put that on the agenda. There's potential zoning violations in that parking of the light there. And I understand there's going to be a possible sprouts, and we can't have lights and sprouts. It would discourage it. I asked you to look into it as the importance. I also asked you to form an active transportation commission because you're up to, I understand possibly. Do I have a few more minutes, please?
Thank you. You got to wrap it up.
I'm trying to use keyboards. The point is, it used to give permission to do multiple things and bring Garden Grove alive on Main Street. We do not have a grant program based on recognition of your master plan.
Thank you. Sorry, in fairness, my apologies, but we've got to stay firm to our three minutes that we're promising people. Let's move along.
The next speaker is Jacqueline Doe.
Hello. I am here tonight to talk about Agenda Item 2C. I urge the council to consider Lexipol's reputation before authorizing any agreement or contract with the company. Lexipol has been known to draft policies that barely meet the legal minimum standard for police officers. And policies from Lexipol are known to also authorize the use of force for police officers more generously, relying on broader and more vague language to bypass liability. Various police departments have also been sued due to faulty policies from Lexipol that were found to violate constitutional standards and laws. And furthermore, it is concerning that we may be allowing people outside of our community to decide how our police will operate. I hope that if we do indeed use policies from Lexipol, that the city will also allow more local community voices to be part of the conversation. And before I finish tonight, I would also like to ask the city to allow residents to leave public comments through Zoom. It seems unfair that the council has been permitted to attend this meeting via teleconferencing while residents have had to attend in person for the last three meetings. The technology exists. Please accommodate us for our health and safety, too. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Nguyen.
Is it, is it good? All right, cool. Hi, my name is Andrew, and I'm going to be speaking about the Youth Commission. I just want to commend the council, and I think this is a great idea that we're putting this up. And I think that you should be listened to. But I do get a little worried because I've been to all the past City Council meetings and listening to the council, some of the rhetoric and the language that the council, both the council and some residents have been using. It sounds like I'm hearing a lot of discrediting of the youth's opinions and ideals. So I just really hope that we don't carry that into a government-sponsored Youth Action Committee. I've been hearing things like, oh, that the youth have knowledge, but they don't have wisdom. But I think there is wisdom in, in the youth because they're kind of like a blank slate, and they have a lot to absorb. And that means they have less, less of a, I guess, I don't know how to say it. They, they can take in a lot of ideas without having something so pre-established. And I've been hearing a lot of, oh, I'm glad that the youth are here, and I'm glad that they're coming out. But we're not going to listen to, we're like, this isn't going to change. I hear a lot of that kind of language, and it makes me worry like that the youth aren't going to be listened to. So I just want to put that out there. We should be listening to the youth, and I really hope that this Youth Commission does the youth justice. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any more cards?
I have no more speaker cards, but I just would like to announce the people who submitted their written comments to the City Council. Mr. Craig Durfee and his topics were to support a Youth Commission, and he provided historical documentation. He requested for POW and MIA flags to be displayed at Brookhurst Bixby and Nelson Acacia to be lit at night. He requested the city seek the Urban Greening Grant Program funded through the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund and to conduct grant workshops. He suggested to partner for funding and apply for grants to maintain city parks. And he also suggested the Bicycle Traffic Ticket Diversion Program and a Free Bike Safety, Traffic Safety Education Program. He also requested transportation workshops, audio posted online for all commissions, more responsibilities for commissions and comments that were provided. He submitted comments that, that he provided to the Planning Commission. The next individual was Joshua Galili. His topic was that he's in support of walkable neighborhoods and introduction of mixed-use zoning in the letter that he submitted to the City Council regarding the housing element. Ms. Bonnie Crawford also submitted an email, and her concern is for high density and paving over lawns for parking of multiple vehicles in neighborhoods. The next person was Dakota Hill, and his topic was opposing the contract with Lexipol, and he supports redistributing funds to progressive crime prevention programs. Mr. Joe LaRiquey, he is disappointed with the young people who attended the last City Council meeting as they did not participate in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Yera Marida, Carla Navarro, Paulo de la Fuente, Lynette Alvarado, Christine A. Darius, Angelica Two, Liz, Teresa Bowie, Spencer Bradley, Jacqueline Doe, Charlie Mendoza, Alejandra Guadardo, Erica Higbee, and Tobias P. And they requested virtual comment in, for City Council meetings for public speakers. And they are also in opposition to the contract with Lexipol, and they are concerned about police brutality. Ms. Isabel Nguyen, Ashley Dow, Mariela Vasquez, Chad May, Julie Vin, Kathy Lee, Connie Tran, Anna Lee, and John Cow. They sent emails regarding the Nationwide Diversify Our Narrative Campaign and petition, and they would like to bring attention to and encourage discussion on race and identity among students at the Garden Grove Unified School District. And that's all I have.
All right, Terry, thank you very much. That will conclude oral communications. We will now recess to other agencies. And I'm going to start with Successor Agency. So Madam Clerk, can you call roll for Successor?
Councilmember Bridgum? I'm sorry, Member Bridgum?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, so we already did oral communication simultaneously with other legislative bodies. That takes us on to Consent Calendar, which is just 2A, receive and file of the minutes. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'll move it, George.
Take your second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Bridgum?
Yes.
Member O'Neil?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from Successor Agency members? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn and we'll go over to Sanitary District. I'll hand it over to President Faboue.
Sure. Madam Clerk, please roll call for the, for the Sanitary District.
Member Bridgum?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yeah.
Vice President O'Neil?
Here.
President Bowie?
Yeah. We have done public voting in conjunction with City Council, so we move on to consent items. We have four items on consent, please. Do I have a motion?
I'm, this is Deidre, I move it.
O'Neil, second. Please call for the vote.
Member Bridgum?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neil?
Yes.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. Moving on to item for consideration, we have item, only one item, 3A, award the contract to Gannett Fleming Incorporated. Do I have a staff report?
Item 3A is a word of contract to Gannett Fleming, Inc. for civil engineering design, construction management, and inspection services for the sewer system rehabilitation Plan Phase One Sewer Main Linings and Spot Repair Project Numbers Three and Four. And I believe Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmeroy, Mr. President, and members of the board. Tonight, the board is being asked to award a contract to Gannett Fleming Incorporated for the design, construction management, and inspection of various sewer lines in the city. The sewer lines are in a residential area bounded by Dale Street, Brookers Street, Trask Avenue, and Lamson Avenue. This project will include almost 23,000 feet of sewer main repairs and related work. This work is required for the district's capacity assurance plan, and the goal of this work is to minimize sewer overflows. Staff received three proposals from qualified civil engineering firms. The proposals were rated by three staff members, and it was determined that Gannett Fleming Incorporated would provide the best service based on their qualifications. The negotiated cost for these services is just over $300,000. Should the board decide to award the contract tonight, the design work can begin in September and is expected to be completed by the end of the year. This project is included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for using sewer funds. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Colleagues? Any question for staff?
I'll move the item.
Hearing on? Okay. Is there a second?
O'Neil, second.
I now open the public hearing if there's anyone who would like to discuss this item. Hearing on, we now close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please, any discussion from colleagues? Hearing on, do I have a motion? I mean, O'Neil, motion. Can we call for the vote?
Member Bridgum?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neil?
Yes.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. Moving on to matter from the board members. Hearing on, I now close the Sanitary District meeting and back to City Council. Make a chance.
Thank you. We will reconvene City Council. That takes us on to Consent Calendar, and it's recommended that Items 2A through 2F be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items. Colleagues, do I have a request to pull?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Quinn, I'd like to pull 2C.
And Councilman Bridgum, I'd like 2F.
Okay. Duly noted. Any others, or do I have a motion for the balance?
Faboue, I move the motion.
I'll second it.
A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bridgum?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen? Councilmember Deidre Nguyen? Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen? Councilmember Deidre Nguyen, I believe you're muted. Councilmember Klaufenstein?
I said yes.
Okay.
I'm here, sorry, did I miss?
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, thank you. Item 2C is requested by Kim Nguyen.
Yes, if we could have whoever's on staff ready to present, speak on this item. I want to preface this by saying that Councilmembers Deidre Nguyen and Stephanie Klaufenstein and I met as an ad hoc regarding public safety, and one of the areas that we identified as a gap within our police department was maintaining and upkeep of our policies. And Lexipol was one of the options presented to us, so this was requested by myself and the ad hoc committee members as a potential tool for our police department.
Hear me?
Yeah, who's that?
Hi, this is Lieutenant, Lieutenant Carl Whitney with the Police Department.
Oh, hi, Carl. Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Council members. We're here tonight to obtain City Council approval to appropriate funding from fiscal year 2021 and to enter an agreement with Lexipol LLC. The Garden Grove Police Department currently utilizes a policy and procedures manual that is updated by Department's Professional Standards Division as needed. The design and maintenance of the manual has become cumbersome and burdensome throughout the years because of limited staffing available. The Policy and Procedures Manual requires maintenance to ensure that it is up to date, representative of current legal standards, and applicable to the nation's best practices. Lexipol LLC is America's leading provider of risk management services, tools and resources for public safety organizations, delivering its copyrighted content and unique services through a web-based development system with an integrated training component. Lexipol's policy manual is written by legal and law enforcement professionals who constantly monitor major court decisions, legislation, and emerging trends affecting law enforcement operations. Lexipol provides state-specific customized policy and training solutions through a proprietary hosted application service. The program is unique in several ways. No other company or systems offers policy and risk management tools coupled with context-sensitive training in one integrated package. Lexipol policy content will reduce staffing time spent revising and drafting departmental policies. Lexipol also tracks officers who have reviewed certain policies for keeping up-to-date training records. Lexipol's team of public safety lawyers ensures that our policies will be up-to-date and legally defensible. Using Lexipol program will provide the police department with policies that reflect up-to-date industry standards and best practices, content specific to the laws and practices of California, daily scenario-based training that reinforces our department's policy, and timely updates in response to new legislation and case law. The Lexipol program will provide online access to our policies through a web-based platform and a mobile application. Being web-based, our policies and procedures will always be available for public view in compliance with current California law and for transparency purposes. The first-year implementation and startup cost is $59,400 and an additional $26,736 for the subscription service. If the contract is approved, an annual ongoing subscription cost will be $26,736 beginning in fiscal year 2122. It is recommended that City Council approve an agreement with Lexipol LLC for the startup cost of $59,400 and an annual subscription cost of $26,736, as well as ongoing annual subscription cost of $26,736 to provide policy manual maintenance and support for the police department and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. This is the end of my report. I am open for any questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant. This is Councilmember Kim Nguyen. I have a few questions and just wanted to, for transparency purpose, make sure that we address these for the public to hear. The first question that I have is, how many other cities in Orange County use Lexipol?
Right now, in Orange County, there's, every agency in Orange County uses Lexipol, but three agencies, ourself and two other agencies. Other agencies using Lexipol. There's other agencies, including the police departments that are using Lexipol, that include Cal State Fullerton, UCI, Rancho San Diego College, Coast Community College, and Santa Ana School Policy. So we're one of the three agencies not using it.
Thank you for that. And this, Lexipol also helps in ensuring that we're compliant with California state law, correct?
Exactly. Lexipol has a team of attorneys and law enforcement professionals that are constantly monitoring current case law and legislation updates. I can give you one example, AB 392 was, went into effect in January of this year. This redefined how law enforcement uses use of force out here on the street. It was a game changer in the law enforcement field. What that required for us to do in the police department was to write the policy, then we had to make sure it lined up with what the law was saying. We had to get our city attorney to approve it, and then it was eventually sent to staff here to be approved, and then it was disseminated to the police department. That took several months for us to get that done. Lexipol, on the other hand, their team of attorneys had a hold of the legislation before it came out and before it went into effect. They were able to write the policy, get it approved by their liability experts, their law enforcement experts, and they were able to push that policy out to all the police departments that subscribe to their service. So it would save us a ton of time and resources in writing policy.
Thank you. And is this new money, or is this coming out of an existing budget?
In my conversations with the chief, he is going to look at our inside current budget that we have to fund Lexipol. And ongoing budget process, we'll have to review where the funding source is going to come from, but the chief has committed to using our inside resources right now and not adding any additional monies to pay for the program this year.
Thank you. And then, one other question that I had was, in the proposal, it mentioned monitoring completion of training, and I don't see that reiterated in the report. I just want to confirm that Lexipol will also help us make sure that our officers are completing the training, if they're not, sending them the warnings and making sure that they do complete it, correct?
Correct. So we have the ability to monitor every officer on which policy is a review. What's great about Lexipol is we have the ability to send out daily training bulletins, so we could make sure our officers are always reviewing the low-frequency, high liability stuff. For example, pursuits, use of force, that's always in the forefront. And if we notice that there's something happening within the organization or an uptick in use of force or pursuits, or something that would cause some liability to the city, we can customally design the type of training that we can disseminate to all our police officers. Our Professional Standards Division will have the ability to monitor who's had the training, and there's also, we can do some testing too, that's done at the sergeant level down in patrol to make sure everybody understands the policies that are being pushed out.
Perfect, thank you. As a policy junkie and someone who does this for a profession, this makes me very excited. One of the things that I really liked about this proposal was that it had that mobile app so that officers can access this while they're out on patrol. So I think that's very exciting. And with that, I would like to motion to approve this item.
If I may, just really quick, I'd like to second it. This is Councilmember Klaffenstein. Being a part of the ad hoc and listening to the chief and others talk about Lexipol, I think as the ad hoc committee, we all agree that this would be a positive and important tool, providing strong policy content, reducing staffing time, tracking and improving documentation and so forth, not only just improving transparency and checks and balances. So I'm definitely supportive of this, and I'll second the motion.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, George.
Yeah, just a quick question, again, for Lieutenant Whitney. By going to this Lexipol, we're not locked into their policies, per se. We still maintain local control and the ability to adjust policies locally as needed, correct?
And that's absolutely correct. When we go to the transition, if this is approved tonight, we actually sit down with their transition team, because we have custom policies that fit our organization and how we do business. So they kind of mold those with the best practices and procedures. So we have the ability to control what we want and what we can add additionally. So it's going to be a several-month review process that we sit down with their legal professionals, and we're going to take some of their standards, and we have some, our own policies that we're going to include with this new manual. So, yeah, of course, we can customize to fit our needs and our environment in our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. That'll take us on to item 2F, as requested to be pulled by Councilmember Brightigan.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I just reading these, and I'm, yeah, I think you know my position on this. I'm vehemently opposed to these types of things. With that being said, I understand that we're just basically updating Garden Grove's ordinances to reflect what is existing state law. I personally don't believe that destroying communities and quality of life is the best way to do these things, but evidently the state does believe so. But with that being said, I don't want to shortchange the public in knowing exactly what is being done, so I'm requesting the full reading of both of the items.
I get how, he just wants to make sure that, okay.
Okay, mayors, members of City Council, this is Omar Sandoval. State law requires that when ordinances are introduced or adopted, the complete ordinance be read in full, unless the council unanimously waive full reading of the ordinance, and at that, in that case, they'll read by title only. So unless the City Council unanimously approve the waiver of full reading of ordinances, we will have to read the full text of the ordinance once it's introduced.
But if we, if we approve this as agendized and as listed, we would still have to read the full title of the ordinance before we take action on it. The title.
Yes, Mayor, that would be correct.
Okay. George, are you okay with that? That's, I mean, that's what we've always done, is read just the title.
I get it. I, just today alone, I got three different texts and emails from people that were upset about it. I, I just don't want to shortchange them. I think the ordinances themselves are like two and a half pages in length. I don't think it's that lengthy to read them and let the public know exactly what they said.
How many pages, Omar?
14 on one and the other one.
Omar says one of them is 14 pages, the one's coming up.
And they're public hearings.
And they're, and they're public hearings, so they will be heard. They would ordinarily be read by title, which would give the description. Yeah, and if we don't approve this, that means we got to read 14 pages for one and 16 pages for the other one.
I'm sorry, for my, I'm sorry, what I looked at was a summary and not the actual, I apologize. Yeah, okay.
I guess the American, but I think I would urge that we go ahead and...
Yeah, as long as these are going to be posted online, and they are posted online, so people can read them and they, you know, are aware that this is state law, and we're, you know, I guess I'm okay with that.
Yes, that is correct, they are published and posted online.
Yes, mayors and City Council, in addition to that, because there are public hearings, a quarter-page ad in the newspaper was published 10 days ago. So we've done all the notifications, and these also went to Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission also had public hearings on these.
Okay.
Mayor, may I say a few words?
Please, go ahead, Fat.
Sure. I understand that this is state law, and we need to let the president know that the city, we don't have any leadway to not implement it, because this is state law that mandated that it be...
Fat? I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to cut you off, I just want to get back on track. Right now, we're still on item 2F on consent, which is just discussion about whether to waive full reading of ordinance listed. So we either have to read by title, which is what we normally do, or else we have to read whatever. So we're not in a discussion on any of the particular items, ordinances yet, or anything to do with state law, we're just, we're just talking about 2F.
Okay.
George, would you like to go ahead and move 2F that you pulled?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes consent items, and that takes us on to public hearings. We do have two public hearings listed, so we'll start with item 3A.
Item 3A is introduction and first reading of an ordinance approving Amendment Number 8027-2020, a zoning text amendment to Title IX of the Municipal Code Zoning Code, entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Code Amendment Number 8027-2020, a zoning text amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to the regulatory, I'm sorry, the regulation of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units." And I believe that Mr. Marino and Ms. Para are here from the Planning Department to give the staff reports.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor? Okay, hi.
Yes, hi, Maria.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. For your consideration, tonight is an amendment to Title IX of the Municipal Code to establish development standards to regulate accessory dwelling units, ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units, JADUs, in the city consistent with state law. Last year, the state legislature enacted, enacted a series of housing bills to facilitate the construction, to facilitate the housing production in the state, which included changes to state law pertaining to the regulation of ADUs and JADUs that became effective on January 1st, 2020. The changes to state law are significant, with the goal of facilitating the production of ADUs and JADUs statewide while restricting local land use control. For tonight's presentation, staff will highlight the major changes to state law as it relates to the frequently asked questions that staff receives from the general public when inquiring about ADUs and JADUs. In your, in your agenda packet, there is an attachment, Attachment A, which staff will use to reference the significant changes to state law, and these changes have been incorporated into the proposed ordinance before you tonight. So we'll begin with page one of Exhibit A, Number One, Permitted Zone. So state law has expanded the zones where ADUs and JADUs are permitted and require jurisdictions to allow ADUs and JADUs in single-family, multiple-family, mixed-use zones where residential uses are allowed. The previous 2017 ADU ordinance that the city adopted limited ADUs to the R1 zone, and at that time, the ordinance did not allow JADUs. With the recent state law changes, ADUs and JADUs would be allowed in the R1 zone, the multiple-family zones, including the R2 and R3 zones, mixed-use zones, as well as residential plan unit development zones, or PUDs. The proposed ordinance will allow an ADU on any lot zone to allow for a single-family residence or multiple-family uses, including sites with a proposed or existing single-family or multiple-family dwellings. JADUs would only be permitted on a lot developed or proposed to be developed with a single-family home. Number two, minimum lot size. So state law now prohibits jurisdictions from establishing a minimum lot size in association with the construction of an ADU or JADU. The city's 2017 ADU ordinance required a minimum lot size of 7,200 square feet to construct an ADU. And with the recent change, state law changes, ADUs can now be constructed on any size lot. So the proposed ordinance will have no minimum lot size requirement for the construction of an ADU or JADU as required by state law. Number three, the number of permitted ADUs. State law has expanded the developments where ADUs are permitted beyond lots developed with a single-family home to include multiple-family development. On lots developed with a single-family residence, the 2007 ADU ordinance adopted by the city only allowed one ADU on a lot developed with an existing single-family home. So state law now requires jurisdictions to allow ADUs on lots developed or proposed to be developed with a single-family residence. The ADU can be constructed either through new construction or conversion, but only one ADU is allowed on a lot with a single-family residence. The state law has also, state law now allows ADUs to be developed within developed, within multiple-family developments. So state law requires jurisdictions to allow up to two ADUs on lots develop, develop or proposed to be developed with multiple-family developments. The proposed ordinance will be consistent with state law and will allow up to two ADUs, which can be designed to be attached or detached from a multiple-family building on lots developed or proposed to be developed with a multiple-family development. In addition, state law requires multiple ADUs to be constructed within portions of existing multiple-family dwelling structures that are not used for living space, including garages, storage room, attic. Up to 25% can be converted into an ADU. So for example, if an existing development has four units, the development can have one ADU conversion, which is 25% of existing units, while a development with eight units can be allowed two ADU conversions, which again is 25% of existing units. So the larger the multiple-family development, the more ADU conversions that would be allowed, which is 25% of the existing number of dwelling units. Number four, which is on page two of Exhibit A, number of ADUs permitted. So in addition to allowing one ADU on a lot improved with a single-family home, state law now requires jurisdictions to allow one JADU, up to 500 square feet in size, within, within space of an existing or proposed single-family home. Previously, the 2017 city ordinance did not allow for JADUs. Now this is a requirement of state law. The ADU, the JADU can be designed as a studio or a one-bedroom unit, depending on the size, and is required to have an efficiency kitchen and can have its own separate bathroom, or can share bathroom facilities with the main dwelling unit. Number five, it's a maximum unit size. So when state law changed in 2016, state law allowed ADUs up to 1,200 square feet in size, although jurisdictions had the ability to establish a reasonable unit size for ADU so long as it did not unreasonably restrict the property owner from creating an ADU. With the 2017 ADU ordinance, the city limited the size of an ADU to 800 square feet. Since the beginning of the year and pending adoption of a new ADU, JADU ordinance, the city has applied the state law requirements to all ADUs and JADU projects submitted for plan check review, which including allowing ADUs up to 1,200 square feet in size in compliance with state law. Since January 1st of this year, 50 building permits have been issued for ADUs greater than 800 square feet, of which 43 were 1,000 square feet or greater. With the proposed ordinance, the recommendation is to allow detached ADUs up to a maximum size of 1,200 square feet. In addition, inconsistent with state law, attached ADUs will be limited to 50% of the primary residence or 1,200 square feet, whichever is less. So if the primary residence is less than 1,600 square feet, an 800 square foot JADU would be permitted. As previously, previously mentioned, JADUs would be allowed up to a maximum size of 500 square feet, which is consistent with the maximum unit size allowed by state law. Number seven, maximum total number of bedrooms allowed in the ADU. So state law has not imposed a requirement on the number of bedrooms allowed in the ADU. The 2017 ADU ordinance did limit the number of bedrooms up to two, and an ADU given the size was limited to 800 square feet. With the recommendation to allow ADUs up to 1,200 square feet in size, and because the units would provide ample space to accommodate up to three bedrooms, staff is recommending that... staff is recommending that the city council approve up to three bedrooms. In addition, the construction drawings that the city has been receiving since the beginning of the year for the larger ADUs, the design of the units can accommodate up to three bedrooms. So the proposed ordinance does recommend up to three bedrooms to be allowed in an ADU. Number eight, ADU parking. So state law establishes the required parking for ADUs. So the city has no control, and there have been no changes in state law regarding the parking for ADUs with the recent state law changes. So consistent with state law, the proposed ordinance will continue to require one parking space per ADU unless the property is located within one half-mile walking distance from a bus stop. Also consistent with state law, no parking would be required for ADU conversions or JADUs. Number nine, which is on page two of Exhibit A, replacement parking. So under the 2017 ADU ordinance, when the garage was converted into an ADU, the enclosed parking that served the primary residence was required to be replaced as open parking space along the driveway in order to continue to provide the required number of parking spaces for the primary residence. With the new state law changes, jurisdiction can no longer require replacement parking in association with the construction of an ADU. State law now prohibits local jurisdictions from requiring replacement parking if a garage, carport, or covered parking space is demolished to accommodate an ADU or JADU or ADU conversion. And the proposed ordinance will comply with state law and will not require replacement parking if a garage, carport, or covered parking structures are demolished to accommodate an ADU or ADU conversion. Number three, minimum building setbacks. So state law has established minimum setbacks for ADU. Under the previous 2017 ADU ordinance sits, we required a five-foot setback for detached ADUs, and if the ADU was attached to the main residence, a 10-foot setback was required. State law now requires a minimum side and rear setback of four feet for ADUs, whether it's attached or detached from the primary residence. And the proposed ordinance will be in compliance with state law and require a forfeit setback for ADUs. Number 14, which is on page four, short-term rental. So consistent with state law and consistent with the 2017 ADU ordinance, the city will continue to prohibit the short-term rentals of ADUs as well as JADUs. Number 15, owner occupancy requirements. So state law has eliminated the owner occupancy requirement in association with the construction of an ADU. And the property owner is no longer required to reside on the property. The state law allows jurisdictions to impose an owner occupancy requirement on lots developed with a JADU and require the property owner to reside on the property. And the proposed ordinance will be in compliance with state law, will eliminate the owner occupancy requirements for ADUs, but will continue to impose the owner occupancy requirements for JADUs. Number 18, impact fees. So state law exempts ADUs or JADUs less than 750 square feet from paying impact fees. And this includes parkway tree fees, park facility fees, drainage fees, and traffic mitigation fees. And ADUs greater than 750 square feet are charged in proportionality in relation to the script footage of the primary residence. So for example, if the ADU is, square footage is 87 or 80% of the main residence, then the fees will be assessed at 80% if the ADU is greater than 750 square feet. If it's less than 750 square feet, no impact fees would be assessed. Number 19 is utility connection, which is on page five. So separate utility meters, including gas, electric, water, will be allowed for ADUs. Under the 2017 ADU ordinance, separate utility meters were not allowed for ADUs, but with the changes to state law removing the owner occupancy requirement, the proposal is to allow separate utility meters for gas, water, and electric, which have been issued for ADUs since the beginning of the year. Separate utilities will not be allowed for JADUs due to the owner occupancy requirement. Therefore, council members, staff recommends that you conduct a public hearing and determine that the ordinance is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Title 14 and introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance approving amendment number A-027-2020 to amend Title IX of the municipal code adopting regulations pertaining to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And this concludes staff presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Maria. Good job. Colleagues, this is a public hearing, so we've got to open. But any questions or clarifications before we open for any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a ton of questions, but I'm willing, let's let the public hearing go forth. Maybe I can ask those questions after. I'm not sure.
Yeah, there'll be time to do that after.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think it's better to do the public comments first. Usually at this point, it would just be any kind of clarification questions about the staff report or that kind of stuff. So maybe let's hear from the public, and then we can, we can get into it thereafter. So. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers wishing to speak on this particular item?
Yes, we do have one speaker. We have Nicholas Dibbs. And we also did, also received a late email written comment from Katie Kissmore, and she's in opposition to ADUs, and she's concerned about people concreting their yard space.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name is Nicholas Dibbs. I, I live in, I've lived here in Garden Grove since 1973. We do have a housing shortage in Southern California and probably throughout much of the state. The ADUs provide the homeowners, I am a homeowner, and it would be nice to have the flexibility of being able to construct a detached ADU in the backyard or a junior ADU if the need arises. So this provides the homeowners with the flexibility to be able to accommodate different housing needs. Many of us, I took, helped take care of my grandmother for several years before she passed away. And it would have been helpful to have a detached ADU for the caregiver to stay in. Or in the case of a granny flat, an ADU could serve as a granny flat for an elderly person to live in the backyard in a detached unit and still be close enough to the family that they could keep an eye on the elder senior parent or grandparent, et cetera. So I, in general, I'm supportive of this change in the state law. I did speak, when you initially passed the ADU ordinances, I suggested you include lots less than 7,200 feet, but now the state has stepped in. So I'm in favor of 3A in general. And we have a good planning and building department that will monitor and make sure that the size and the composition and the looks of the ADU units will be in keeping with the neighborhoods. So I'm in favor of 3A. I do apologize that I didn't make it here for the public comment. Mayor Jones, is there any way I can come back and give a brief public comment in support of the youth commission in 5B later?
I'm sorry, but 5B is not a public, it's not a public hearing. And that would have had to have been back under oral communications previously.
Yeah, I was delayed. So anyway, put me down in favor of 5B. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, any other speakers on 3A?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the public hearing and go to deliberations. So colleagues, who wants to start?
Mayor, if I can please, this is Stephanie.
Please, go ahead.
I guess this is a question, I'm concerned about recourse. Do we have any, anybody that can answer that? What sort of recourse do we have? Maybe we can start there.
This is Omar, city attorney. So in terms of recourse, we don't have much unless our legislators in Sacramento are actually, you know, listening to us. You know, once they pass these laws, we have to comply. And it's not just general law cities. They make them applicable to even charter cities because the state has made a determination that housing is a statewide concern. And so they have also preempted charter cities. So all cities are in the same boat on these regulations. It is important that our codes are complying with state law and also for us to have our local regulations because there are areas where, you know, it's a may rather than a shall. For example, as the staff report indicated, Maria mentioned, the number of bedrooms is not identified in the actual statute. And so we're able in our local code to put a restriction on the number of bedrooms up to three if the ADU is larger than 900 square feet and no more than 1,200 square feet. And then require no more than one bedroom in the smaller units. The other example I can give you has to do with restrictions on junior ADUs, where junior ADUs are ADUs within an existing single-family dwelling. So they take a bedroom or two bedrooms and create those within, inside the house, create a separate ADU, that's a JADU. In those situations, our code and the state law allows us to require that that particular JADU be only rented in conjunction with the homeowner continued to live in the main unit. And it also allows us to require that there's a deed restriction, that the homeowner will continue to live in that unit. Even, you know, for example, if they sell the property down the line, the new property owner has to be an owner occupant of that single-family home if they want to rent the JADU separately. So those are two examples where we still have some local control. There's not much, but at least, at least we have that regulation in our books. Otherwise, developers and property owners will say, well, you don't have that regulation, so we can, you know, we can do whatever we want. So this is why it's important, not only that we are complying with state law, but also enacting our own local ordinance in order to implement, you know, some regulations that the state law still allows us to implement on our own. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, so then what happens, I'll kind of turn it. So what's the recourse then? Like, let's just say we all voted no tonight. Then what recourse does the state have, or what is the flip side to that? If we were to say, no, we're not, we're not going to do this this evening, what happens then?
Then we continue to process ADUs pursuant to the current state law. State law is, specifically says that if your ordinance is not compliant, then the state law applies. And these provisions of state law specifically apply. And so this law became effective January 1st, 2020. The staff reported in the case that we've already processed over 60 ADUs under state law without being able to implement the local control that I just, the two examples that I just gave you. So we would be, we have to continue to allow ADUs. And if we don't allow ADUs, then we're subject to litigation and we're going to lose. And it will be not just the property owner, but it also will be the attorney general of the state of California suing us. And the Department of Housing and Community Development can actually also put us in a blacklist and limit grant funding that we get through the state of California. So, you know, they have a big hammer against local entities, especially if we rely on state funding.
Okay. What about enforcement? You know, obviously, we know that there's a staggering amount of code enforcement issues and complaints and so forth in this city. So how does that work? How does the enforcement side of this work? When I think of just parking and so forth?
Well, in terms of enforcement, you know, when, when we issue building permits, obviously, they have to comply with the building permit regulations that we impose when we do that. And if they don't, then they simply don't get certificates of occupancy, and we can require them to comply. In terms of owner-occupied restrictions for junior ADUs, if, you know, we could always, you know, file litigation and code enforcement action for property owners that are not complying with those regulations and including getting receivers and getting the court to take control of those properties to make them comply. So it's just a typical, you know, code enforcement that we can take. Our code enforcement is most, most of the time reactive, so we respond to complaints. And so that wouldn't change.
So what are other cities doing? I mean, are all 30-plus cities in Orange County, whether they're charter or general, they're passing this, this is just state law, this is what it is, up and down the board, all over Orange County?
Correct. Either that, or they're just following the state statute without implementing, you know, any of the other, you know, any of the local controls that they would still have authority to implement.
Okay. And then finally, I think, I have a concern over infrastructure. I mean, obviously, this wasn't a city that was planned to house this added density. So we have, obviously, we mentioned the parking issues. We have infrastructure issues with roads, our sewer system even. So I just wondered if somebody could speak on that and what that might look like. Will it be taxed, overburdened? I think I know the answer, but I'm just curious.
Well, we do have master plans for water and sewer. And you will look at, you know, streets, master plan reports as well later on this evening. I don't want to speak for our public works director, but in terms of infrastructure, since we cannot, for smaller ADUs, we cannot charge development impact fees, and some capacity fees are also limited. I think the effect of that is that in our next, either both sewer and water studies, fee studies, we're going to have to adjust, you know, for the capital improvements that will be required by the increased usage of our systems. Although we cannot charge property owners for, you know, for building new ADUs, I think we can charge our users down the line if we need additional funding in order to upsize capacity and maintain higher volumes of usage.
I just think there's a lot of things we need to be mindful of, yeah.
Yeah, eventually, the users will pay, not through development impact fees or capacity charges, but as user fees.
Yeah. And I think something we also need to think about here is parking. You know, we have a lot of houses, they're large houses, and they're being chopped up to provide additional rooms or subdivided to allow for additional occupancy. And then you have added cars, you know, certain houses, I talked to residents, and they have 14 cars, and that's just for one house. And then we add these ADUs and junior ADUs, and I think that's going to have to circle back to the parking permits for our city long term. I don't, almost know how we couldn't have to do that at some point down the road. So I think this will bring about a lot of discussion as we move forward. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Stephanie. Others, who would like, yeah, so George, go ahead.
And then O'Neil after that. Yeah, I really think this is kind of just terrible, you know, policy on the state's behalf. You know, these things destroy communities, the quality of life. No place for kids to play anymore. You're basically paving over the backyards, all the, all the trees, all the grass that are people's gardens. It effectively kills the garden in Garden Grove. You know, not to mention the fact that it's contributing greatly to climate change. This is probably the worst climate change disaster in all the state's history that we've actually done. You know, with all the, with all the green being killed, the parking issues, the roads, the sewer, all the infrastructure, the overcrowding viruses, we're in a pandemic right now, cramming more people together. All that does is contribute more greatly to these things. I just really think it's a terrible, terrible thing. Unfortunately, I do understand our, our hands are kind of tied on this. I don't think it does our community any good. And I didn't even bring up the impact on our schools and the overcrowding that we're going to have there. So anyway, as you're aware of my thoughts, I'm greatly against this. Unfortunately, it looks like it's being forced down our throats. I would recommend, if we do have some leeway- Um, I would recommend, if we do have some leeway in the amount of bedrooms, then we limit these, uh limit it to two bedrooms and not three. If everybody had two, three bedroom ADUs in their backyard, that's an impact of six people possibly, or even more uh in each bedroom, right? I mean, just just think of that impact. So my recommendation, let's limit it to two bedrooms in an ADU, um and not go to three.
Thank you. Um, John, you would, you want to go next?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, can hear you just fine.
Okay, thanks. Um, um, there are so many things wrong with this legislation that I am literally sitting here sick to my stomach. Uh, Garden Grove will change forever for the worse. It is so bad, um, it it's gonna devastate our community. And I will fight this as much as I can. I realize, and our public has to realize, this is being crammed down our throat from Sacramento. And they they've never lived here in Garden Grove, they're up there in Sacramento, they live in Northern California, and they're cramming stuff down our throat. And they're telling our local, why why am I elected to Garden Grove City Council? So I can, my hands can be tied by Sacramento? I I'm sorry for the frustration, but I am literally sitting here almost sick to my stomach because I've lived here my entire life. And I see my city going in a negative direction. Now, if these were mother-in-law's quarters and family quarters, great. But we all know, as council people, you can't, you have to understand that I know that this has turned into a business. People are buying homes for cash, they're building an extra unit in the back, and they're renting out rooms. Not a family, it's separate rooms, seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars apiece. There's twelve more cars on the street, there's more trash, they're using up the infrastructure, they're using, and they're not even paying into it because of the the state's legislation that doesn't allow, you know, allows them to get away with not paying a lot of the fees that other people, that we have to pay here as taxpayers. I'm just venting right now because I am sick to my stomach that my community is gonna change forever over the next twenty to thirty years. And we won't even recognize it anymore, and it's already happening. I get calls every day on this. Um, you know, but like my previous council people have said, you know, what can we do? We try to fight it, we're sued, and the attorney general comes into town. So, you know, we feel like our hands are tied. But people need to stand up, the community needs to stand up and tell their their legislature that they don't want this. This is ridiculous. Um, I don't know, in my opinion, as Garden Grove, we're gonna abide by the law. But we may, we may need to restrict as much as we can, as much control as we have. We need to make it as supervised and as difficult as possible. Um, there's plenty of places to build housing, but we don't need to stack each other up in Garden Grove and destroy our neighborhoods. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. Um, who else wants to go next? Okay. Go ahead, Fat.
So Mayor, so do I speak or or what?
Yeah, please go ahead, Fat.
Okay, I I am echoing with my colleagues, Councilman Bradingham, John O'Neil, Stephanie. Uh, I am too sick to the stomach to this. I think it is the most erratic, is responsible law that the uh state passed and push it out on our throats. Uh, not only this one, but uh same thing with with other laws. Uh, that destroying our small business and our better looking community. I agree with Councilman Bradingham, and I think it is a brilliant idea. If we still have a little bit of control, I would all go for limited the number of bedrooms. For the past three years, so many people in our city come to me and uh backing and urging and uh demanding that we, the city, need to help them resolve the parking issue. There is simply no parking spot on the street next to their home. Even in my district, just a couple blocks from my house, people have to fight for their parking. They have to put trust scan out there, or they have to, uh, you know, figure out a way to desperately try to keep the parking in front of the house for them, because it is being used by everyone else. Um, this will make that issue even worse, a lot worse. I understand that, you know, as a city, there is very little uh uh option for us but to comply to the state law. But I cannot accept that uh we, why agree to the state mandate. Do not come up, do not work, and put our effort in trying to resolve the parking issue. Uh, and many other issues that will be taking a toll on our school district. Uh, you know, our neighborhood, our pops. So I I believe that while we still have some control, let number one, look into limited, limiting the number of bedrooms if we still can do it. Charge a high fee for park impact if we can do it, so that we can, you know, somehow regulate this and make it fair for everyone else. For people who do not build second auxiliary units. I I don't think there should be tax on this, but this, I agree, will completely destroy Garden Grove. So I would like staff to tell us, are we going to put together a parking plan to address the issue involving parking along public streets in front of people homes? Number two, what kind of fee are we allowed to impose on this, you know, auxiliary unit? And is there any other things that we can do in order to um keep this in in in, you know, more at base? So that that I would like staff to comment on that.
Uh, Councilman Bowie, uh, this is Scott Stiles. Just a couple brief comments on the, um, I'm gonna defer in a second here to the planning staff to or to talk about the kind of fees you're talking about. On the parking plan, uh, we can, uh, we can certainly go back to, um, go back and revisit that issue. As you know, over the years, uh, we've had a number of requests about parking permits and other things. Uh, this public work staff has talked about that, we presented it. One of the, one of the challenges that you always have uh is that, you know, you implement a parking permit plan on a couple of two or three streets, and then it chases the problem down to the two or three streets right outside of those. Um, obviously, there's a bunch of complex scenarios, building parking garages and everything else, but those are very expensive, obviously. And I know as we've all heard this, uh, the um, uh, the city attorney tell us, one of these things is, is it's forcing a lot of, it's gonna force a lot of development to go vertical and to force us into public transportation, which I don't think anybody is feeling good about. But um, it's something that we've all had to try to think about and deal with. So um, at the direction of of council, we can certainly go back and revisit the uh parking strategies. Specifically, parking permits is something I heard Councilmember Cloppenstein talk about earlier. Um, but it all comes with costs to administer it, manage it. Um, and uh, where does it move the problem to? So those are all things that we can take a look at and talk about, um, if that's the direction of the council. And with that, I want to defer uh to the planning staff on the fees that you referenced.
Uh, this is Maria, I would defer uh the questions regarding the fees to our city attorney Omar Sandoval.
Yeah, I was gonna jump in. Uh, this is Omar. Uh, so in terms of the fees, the statute, the latest statutes um adopted by the state uh put limits on what cities can charge. If the units are seven hundred and fifty square feet or less, we cannot charge any development impact fees. And any capacity fees, uh, such as sewer connection, water connection, those fees have to be commensurate, commensurate and proportional to the size of the ADU. So we couldn't charge a full amount, that we normally would charge a single family dwelling unit. We have to come up with a new fee study to identify the appropriate amount based on the size of the ADU. Um, so so in terms of fees, state law says that we can only charge what it costs to provide the service. So we charge uh a permit fee, obviously, an application fee. Uh, we cannot exceed the cost of the staff time to process those fees. And in terms of development impact fees, again, if the unit is seven hundred and fifty or less, we cannot, you know, we cannot charge any. And then for larger ADUs, we can only charge a proportional uh amount of that. So the state law already um already limits us i- in that sense. Uh, in terms of parking as to ADUs, this state law also limits us uh to no more than one parking space for a detached ADU. For junior ADUs, we cannot even require new parking. Uh, and for conversions of an existing structure, we cannot require replacement parking either. So uh, the state, um, the state is is really trying to force cities to promote uh individuals getting off their cars and using more public transit. And this is just one of the ways that they're doing it. Uh, by limiting the ability of of local jurisdictions from requiring uh additional parking requirements.
Um, a follow-up question, if I may.
Go ahead.
So how are we as a city plan to address the parking issue? We know that uh parking along public street will be a nightmare. How are we going to, first of all, are we going to have our traffic engineering taking a look at, you know, the issue and come up with a plan to address it? We cannot just say, there's not much we can do, it's too expensive. That's that's, to me, is is very passive. We need, we need, I I understand that this is coming, pushing down to onto our throat. But we have to address the issue. And we cannot just say, wow, there's nothing we can do, and then just sit there, and then maybe everyone suffer.
Yeah, uh, Councilman, uh, this is Scott again. Um, obviously, we can, we know this is an important issue for uh all the council members. And uh, uh, if this is a priority for council, which I'm sure that you're going to tell me it is, uh, we will dedicate some time to really take a look at best practices. Obviously, um, larger cities than ours, more dense cities than ours are facing these same same issues. Cities like Anaheim, Santa Ana, other cities are in, are are falling into the same problem we are. And so we can really do a deep dive, take a look at uh what some of the best practices are that cities in Orange County are doing to try and uh deal with this. Uh, so um, uh, we can certainly spend some time doing that.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, hold on, I think Kim was next.
Oh, yes.
And also a reminder for everybody to mute, if you're not speaking, please mute.
Thank you, Councilmember Kim won here. Um, while I am bothered by the fact that this is gonna have what I think to to be monumental impact on our parking in our city, which is already a huge problem, I know that myself and Councilmember Britton, uh, Bradingham, uh, you know, proposed having parking enforcement to kind of help ease some of those issues, but I think this is gonna evaporate that. So I am bothered by that component to this. And I'm also disappointed in the fact that this is gonna be a huge impact to our staff. Um, and that this isn't gonna count toward arena numbers, which to me is something that I'm gonna be advocating and pushing for um on SCAG and OCOG. Um, I do want to say though, to counter that, you know, Deadwood's advocate is that there is a need for housing in our city. And the folks complaining about this are folks that own homes, and most of them who have huge plots. And many of them who oppose affordable housing and density bonus projects in their neighborhood. And if you're concerned about a decrease in green space, that is, that is the burden of the owner of the home to bear, not the city as a whole. If if you, if this body is truly concerned with the lack of green space, then our attention needs to be put to rehabilitating, preserving, and adding more parks in our city. We have property that we own that are sitting there, that we could easily convert um to parks or parklets or, you know, figure something else out if that's truly what we're concerned about. But it hasn't seemed to me that that's been something that's been a priority for us. So I I kind of don't agree with some of the comments that are being made in this regard. You know, uh, folks are gonna benefit from this in the sense that many people in our community are doubled, tripled, quadrupled up in their homes. This is gonna allow for them to, you know, not be crammed up in a home, to have other space, to save money, potentially buy their own home. Again, I would feel a lot better about this particular item if it was going towards our nineteen thousand unit number for arena, which is, as I mentioned, something I will be strongly, you know, advocating for and meeting with our legislators if need be. And working reasonably with our leadership um to push for this to be counted as such if it's possible. I I don't, I I think there's still time to do that based on my last gag meeting. But um, there is a need, and although this is gonna have tremendous impacts, I I think that there's ways to mitigate that. One of my biggest concerns, as stated earlier, is parking. So I hope while permit parking gives me heart palpitations, because I know if we do it in one area, we're gonna have to do it in multiple areas, and that can easily lead down a rabbit hole. Um, but I don't know, we are prepared to go down, and I don't know that we have the money to provide the resource to PD to do that, because none of our officers, I'm sure, want to be, you know, parking police. So that's a a whole other host of uh issues we're gonna have to be looking to 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 resolve this or mitigate this parking problem. But um, this is state law, it's not like we have an option here. So I I I will be voting yes, and with that, I'd move this item.
Yeah, hold on, I think we have uh George next, again, and then Tuha.
To be fair.
I I kind of, uh, I already spoke, so go ahead and let uh Tuha go, Tuha go.
Okay, sorry, I was just trying to take him in order of who I was hearing jumping in. Go ahead, Tuha.
Yes, uh, for this item, I know that we've been discussed, and I totally agree regarding to the parking. Uh, many places we have a issue with the parking, and I would suggest that we should look into the parking, uh, study parking. But at the same time, um, this one, this one echo through is that it's also state mandated. And I know that we, you know, it's gonna change Garden Grove in many ways. Um, and as, well, if you look at it this way, right now, many families are grand generations. That we can't afford, I mean, many people can't afford to buy the house. And so, and so, and then at the same time, um, the family, we also have aging parents, aging grandparents, and ADU actually helping, uh, helping them as well to to have a kid. Um, grand generation, um, living in the same, in the same area, um, that can look out for the elderly. So this is one of the things that we have to look at on the positive side. But yet, of course, we do have challenges of parking and challenges of high density. But like, uh, Councilmember Kim won mentioned, um, currently, some of the family in the same household, they um, they have more than, you know, more, more people living in the same living space, and that's also causing some safety issue too. So the ADU be able to, um, to to implement. Uh, and then city can actually look at the safety code, is actually helping. And so I always, I I look at the positive side is that uh, as our, as our city, uh, the populations and also at the same time, we do have a, the older generation getting older. And this is a way to have the fam, put the, the, the parent, the grandparents and the kid together. And so to 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 be living in the same, in the same, um, in the same area. That's that's all my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, just, my comment about the limiting the size of the bedrooms, you know, these, I think it's wise to limit it to two if we have that ability. Quite frankly, you know, these ADUs aren't condos, they're not luxury apartments. They're basically just a doghouse with a bathroom. I mean, there's no quality of life for the person living there. These are small, cramped spaces, and putting three bedrooms in them, you know, and you know there's probably going to be two or three people in each bedroom. It's just, you know, this is not an acceptable lifestyle for anybody, poor or rich. This is just unacceptable living conditions. And I just think we need to limit the size. If we have that ability, we need to limit it to two bedrooms maximum.
Thanks, George. Can we explore that with staff for a minute, drill into that? So, you know, if, if we have discretion to, if that's not a state requirement that we allow three bedrooms, if we're allowed to limit it to two, then what else is there in this item that we're approving tonight that we might be able to? Like, are there any other areas where we're somehow or for some reason exceeding what would be mandated by the state level? And can we get some color on that? Because coming in, I would have just presumed that the state is mandating that we have to allow up to three bedrooms. If that's not the case, then, then why would we be, you know, offering any additional bedrooms or any other sort of benefits like that, as opposed to just what's minimally mandated by the state level?
Mayor, this is Stephanie again. That's kind of what I meant in the beginning about recourse. Have we picked this apart to the nth degree to find those kinds of opportunities to where we don't have to go with three bedrooms? We can go with two and so forth. I mean, this is just, it's a lot to cover in one meeting, and to make sure that we are giving the residents a full overview of this. This is potentially life-changing for a lot of people. So I think it's important that we give this all of our due diligence.
Absolutely.
This is Omar, city attorney. So the bedroom, number of bedrooms is not addressed in the state statute, which is why we can identify the maximum number of bedrooms. We can, we can say no more than one bedroom, or no more than two bedrooms. We can definitely say that. But all of the other provisions of the ordinance, the only other item that I was able to identify where we have some discretion, where the state law says may rather than shall, is on the owner occupancy for junior ADUs. I don't recall any other leeway that the statute gives us. But, you know, if the council wants to direct for us to go back to the drawing board and take one more look, we can definitely do that. Just know that, you know, for the next, for the next applications that come in, they're just going to be processed pursuant to the current state law.
Mayor Jones, I don't think there is an urgency to this item today. I would like to make a motion to table it. But not only that, I would like staff to solicit input from the resident. There is a benefit for it, even though that a lot of this law doesn't give us any luxury to change. But I think public input is very important to let the legislative in Sacramento know that, you know, residents of Garden Grove doesn't like this law, or, you know, we like this law. So I think it is very prudent that we have to go through the full public input in order for us to vote on it, you know, at the future date on this issue. I would like to make that motion to table it for maybe a month or two months, because there's no urgency, and I hope that my colleague will second it and will, will agree to it.
Mayor, this is a member of the city council, Omar Sandoval again. Yeah, so we can definitely continue processing applications pursuant to state law. And if the council wishes to table this item, the caveat would be that with this ordinance, we're capping the number of bedrooms to three. I doubt that we're going to get applications with five bedrooms, given that the maximum size of an ADU is 1,200 square feet. But I don't know. The only other thing I need to tell you is that if we make substantive changes to the ordinance, state law requires that we first send it back to planning commission to review those changes before it comes back to council. So depending on the changes that we identify, we can still make. If they're deemed to be substantive, you won't hear this item again for, you know, a couple of weeks, maybe two months. Because we'll have to have public hearings before the planning commission, which means that we have to send public notice, notifications, and public hearings of planning commission before it can come back to city council. I just wanted to let you know that.
Mayor, councilmember Kim?
Yeah, go ahead, Kim.
I was just going to say, because I would agree to the limit of the two bedrooms. Could we not move this item forward with that, the little leeway that we do have to include that limit on the two bedrooms? And then moving, moving past this item to do some, you know, educational, you know, virtual, I'm assuming, town hall type events where we can educate the public on what ramifications of this state law is? And if they so feel the need to express that to their assembly members and their state senators, that they have the full information to be able to write letters and make phone calls. But given that, you know, there's not delaying this seems kind of fruitless, since there's no way to reverse or recourse to challenge this at this point. So I would prefer that we approve this item with the two-bedroom limit, and then, you know, do the education and outreach moving forward.
Mayor, if I can, I'm going to be honest here. As I mentioned before, this is life-changing to the residents of Garden Grove. This is changing the neighborhoods for good. We have been an incorporated city for over 60 years, and we are changing everything and turning it on its ear. I think we owe it to the residents to give this our due diligence and spend the time picking through this and making sure. I'm fine with more community outreach, I'm always for that, I always think that's a good idea. But I don't have a problem with spending more time on this. I think we owe that transparency to the residents.
Councilmember Kim, but I guess my question is, what time, if Omar's telling us the only thing we can do, the only thing that he's found is this particular item, then why are we delaying it for? That's not going to change. I'm all for the transparency, giving the information to the community and all of that goodness, because I think it's necessary, because I don't think people paid attention to this item, except for a small group of people. And so letting them know what this is and what impact that's going to be, I think is absolutely necessary. But giving them that false sense of hope that we're going to be able to change this, I don't think is a good idea.
Let me, Mayor Jones here, let me jump in for just a second, try and just recalibrate in terms of where we're at right now. So within the context of, I think we all acknowledge that this is by state mandate, and it's in our best interest to approve something ultimately, not necessarily right this second tonight, but to approve something as opposed to not approving it, because at least then we have some degree of local control as opposed to zero. The benefit of continuing it would be, I think, to drill down into any opportunities, like going from three bedrooms, as stated in the report, to limiting it to two bedrooms, or any other opportunities like that. Omar mentioned something else about owner occupancy too. I don't know if there's an opportunity there to kind of restrict this to only owner occupancy in some cases and some kind of, is that what you're saying?
We already have in our ordinance an owner occupancy requirement for junior ADUs. And so if we don't adopt this ordinance, introduce it this meeting and adopt it at the next meeting, we'll be able to enforce and apply an owner occupancy requirement for junior ADUs.
Okay, so back on, back on point. The benefit of continuing this would be to drill down into items like that. Like, where do we have some sort of discretion to exercise local control and maybe tighten some of the screws on requiring owner occupancy wherever the state doesn't mandate otherwise? Limiting the number of bedrooms, limiting whatever factors are that we could limit at the local level. The downside risk of continuing is that between now and when it comes back to us for approval, there could be more applications submitted with five-bedroom ADUs within the context of a 1,200-square-foot ADU, or, you know, things like that, right? So the downside risk is, between now and when we approve something, it's really not clearly defined at the state level, and people could take advantage of our lack of having any local restrictions on what they can apply for. So just wanted to clarify the context of that, is that I think it's prudent that we drill into any opportunities we can to tighten this up, since it's being mandated down upon us. And since it will have an effect on the character of our neighborhoods and our community, that we do the best we can with the hand that we're being dealt from the state level. And downside is just, if we're going to continue it, then we better expedite that process in a way that we can get staff on it, get planning commission back on it, and get it back to us as quickly as possible, so that we don't have a flood of additional new applications come forward between now and when we define those rules. And when I did ask earlier, I believe we have something like 700 applications in the queue, if I'm not mistaken, for ADUs already, which is a staggering number of units to add to single-family homes.
Mayor Jones, may I say, say what?
Hold on, I think, I think Tuha was waiting in the wings, is that correct?
No, I'm good, thank you, Mayor, I'm good.
Okay, go ahead, Pat.
Okay. I don't agree that, with the notion that if we don't move to, I got it now, it will create a lot more issue for us. I think otherwise. Acting on this issue now will make it even worse for us. Here's the reason. If we table this for a couple of weeks or a month, there might be a few dozen or, you know, 100 or 200 more applications that take advantage of the fact that we don't have an ordinance to limit the number of bedrooms, for example. But if we do now, we are opening up 1,000 more, you know, application in the future that will, you know, will take advantage of the lack of other additional measures that we put in place. I think it is very important that we need to do our prudent. Even though I trust Omar and staff that have looked at the ordinance passing down from the state, we have an exhaust, you know, all of the possibility to see if we have any other option to consider other measures. Perhaps we won't be able to find any more additional measure to manage this horrendous issue that we are facing. But it's warranted that we do something about it. So I would not, I would not rest and vote on this, which is a notion that, yeah, this is mandated, there's nothing else we can do. I think that is very irresponsible for us. I made the motion, I made an internet motion to table this, and I would like to know if there's anyone seconded.
Hold on, let me go back just for, let me go back for clarification on that. Was there even a, I think Kim did motion it, but was there even a second on the motion?
No.
We, I don't think we've gotten there yet, but.
I don't, I don't think so.
Um, I guess I need, I don't.
No one seconded Kim's motion.
Let's, let's start from scratch and say there's no motions on the table at the moment. So, so if you're, if you're making a motion, Pat, it's not a, it's not a substitute motion, it's an actual motion.
Mayor Jones, I would second Pat's motion, but I would ask that this come back to us at the second meeting, at the next meeting. I don't want to delay this too far out because of the potential repercussions we could face with additional applications coming down the pipe, where the restrictions we can place are not in place, and they're going to be a little bit more liberal, given the state law. So we could, I don't want to table this for too much out. If we, I would second the motion if we could have this back at the next council meeting.
Okay, but just to be clear, Omar said earlier that if we change this, I believe he said, right, that by some facet of the state mandate, it would have to go back to planning commission first. So it has to go from us through staff, back to planning commission, and then, so I don't know if that happens by our next council meeting.
The plant, this is.
One sec, George.
The planning and land use law says that if a proposed ordinance is changed substantially from the ordinance that was reviewed and recommended by the planning commission, then those substantive changes have to go back to planning commission for review and recommendation to council as well. I mean, this is an amendment to the zoning code, and so state law requires that the planning commission first review them and make a recommendation to the city council. And so if the city, if at the city council level there are substantive changes, then the law says those changes need to go to planning commission for review recommendation as well, before the council can actually implement those changes. So that's, so it comes down to whether any changes we make to this proposed ordinance are substantive or substantial, such that it would require planning commission review of the changes before the council can actually act on it. I don't know.
We don't know that yet.
I think, I think that limiting. Yeah, I think that limiting to two bedrooms instead of three is not a substantive or substantial change, because the planning commission already recommended three. You know, we're just lowering the standard. But if, if we can find, and, you know, this is a complex legislation, I can't remember every detail of it on the fly. And so if, if you're asking me to identify other areas where we can, you know, tighten up a little bit, I do need additional time to go back and re-review the law with that eye to make sure I didn't miss anything, and I will need at least two weeks for the next meeting. I just don't know if I'm going to be able to identify additional revisions that, that under the law would be deemed substantial, that would require planning commission review. I don't know that. So, I mean, if you table it for two weeks, for me to take a look at the law again with a different, you know, with the more, you know, get sharpened eye, and I can come back to you and tell you, you know, these are additional changes you can make. And if I can tell you that they're not substantive, then we can move forward. But if I tell you that they are substantial and substantive, then I will be strongly recommending that it goes back to planning commission, so.
I think this is a must, and I think we should do it for two weeks, but I think this is an absolute must.
Mr. Mayor?
Tuha, and then John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think I agree with councilmember Kim when she did mention to push back for two weeks. And at the same time, Omar said he need two weeks, so I really love to see that Omar can do some, some homework and then present back to us in two weeks for next council.
Great. Okay, so just to, just to be clear, that, and it sounds like we're all getting kind of on the same page on this, that if we can do this and bring it back to council within two weeks, and unless there's something that pops out as being substantive, to the point where we would have to go to planning commission, our preference would be that it, it just goes and comes right back to us on council and not having to go through any additional steps or time. And the direction, the specific directive to staff would be to study anywhere and to legal counsel to explore any opportunities to tighten up, so that our local ordinance is in no way any more lenient than what the state is mandating, right? There's, there's, you know, any opportunities where it's bedroom count, whether it's owner occupancy requirements, whether it's, you know, square footages, open space, private open space, public open space, parking requirements, any of those facets that are pertinent to the development of accessory dwelling units should be contemplated, so that our local ordinance is in no way any more lenient than what the state is minimally requiring us to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, George.
Yeah, I was just going to bring it up and can kind of probably resolve some of this. If, you know, my cursory reading of the law, and Omar would have to chime in, but if I recall, it reduces the amount of processing time for these units from six months to 90 days. You know, 90 days is, you know, we got plenty of time in 90 days. So there's no rush. We have, we, we could, if somebody comes in tomorrow with an ADU request, the city has 90 days before they have to process it. So at least that's my cursory reading.
Omar's reminding me it's actually 60 days, not 90 days, but points still made.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's kind of, I'm sorry, it's 60 days, but, so that gives us two months, so we're not under any kind of time restraint for two weeks or anything like that.
Yeah, good call.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so anybody else need to speak, or are we ready to, do we have a motion in a second?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call vote, please, to continue for two weeks under those directions.
Well, was it two weeks or to continue it to do it right in the time needed?
Um, this is Omar. If it's two weeks, if it's two weeks that we don't have to renotice, we just keep the public hearing open. If it's more, if it's not to a date certain, then we would have to renotice before we put it back on the agenda. So I recommend the two weeks.
And just to clarify, by two weeks, we're talking about our next scheduled council meeting, whatever that is? Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigum?
Uh, yes, to continue.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes to continue this item for two weeks.
Okay, that takes us on to public hearing, item 3B.
Item 3B is introduction and first reading of an ordinance approving Amendment Number A 28, 2020, a zoning text amendment to Title IX of the Municipal Code, zoning code entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Code Amendment Number A 28, 2020, a zoning text amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, amending the density bonus and other incentives for affordable housing in the residential and mixed-use zones." And Mr. Moreno is here to give the report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council members. The item before you tonight is to transmit a recommendation from the Planning Commission recommending City Council to approve a text amendment to amend the density bonus ordinance for affordable housing in residential and mixed-use zones. California Density Bonus Law requires the city to adopt an ordinance that specifies how the city will comply with its provisions. The state legislator has amended Density Bonus Law since the city last adopted its ordinance, and the most recent adopted amendment became effective January 1st of this year. The ordinance that was included in your packet updates the regulations to conform to state law. The revisions include removing the density bonus regulations from the sections pertaining to special uses in the residential multifamily zones and place them in the sections that apply to the zone's development standards, as well as add the regulations in the mixed-use zones. Additionally, rather than copying all provisions of state law into the code, the new regulations simply specify the specific provisions of state law that affect development standards in the residential zones. The Density Bonus Law requires that the city ensure that the affordability of the required number of units be preserved for a minimum of 55 years if a density bonus and/or other incentives are granted to a development. The city is further required to monitor the continued affordability of the units annually, which does require staff time, however, this requirement is the same as it is under the previous, or was, as under the previous Density Bonus Law requirements. The zoning text amendment specifies that the affordable units must be constructed concurrently with or prior to the construction of the market rate units. The affordable units must be integrated with the market units so that affordable units are not segregated to a specific area of the development. And the developer must establish a marketing program and management plan to ensure that the affordable units are always available to households qualifying under the affordable requirements. Finally, since the Planning Commission, staff made minor revisions to the draft ordinance that added language consistent with the state density bonus law regarding replacement housing requirements, which were highlighted in the draft ordinance that is part of your packet. With that, the Planning Commission recommends that City Council, one, conduct a public hearing, two, determine that the ordinance is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Section 15061B3, and introduce the ordinance for the first reading approving Amendment Number A 028, 2020 to amend the density bonus and other incentives for affordable housing applicable to residential mixed-use zones. That would conclude staff's report, and staff is here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Lee. Can you summarize just, what are the major underlying changes in this text amendment? I mean, it gets applied to mixed use now? I'm asking because it seems like a lot of what you said was already applicable prior to January 1st, 2020, like even before, you had to submit a marketing and management plan, you had to submit all those things, so now it applies to mixed use projects. What else is substantially different than before this year?
So now, so now with the previous ordinance, they could, developers could ask for three concessions, now they can ask for four concessions, providing that the project is 100% affordable. There is also now on top of those concessions, developers can also ask for waivers from development standards as well. I think those are really the, the two of the more major ones. Oh, the other thing is if you are, if a project is located near a major transit stop, which is two transit lines that have the frequency of buses going every 15 minutes, then they would get 100% density bonus on that one. If they're along a major high-quality transit corridor, say like Chapman Avenue, or if they're within a half a mile of that, then they could actually get like an 80% density bonus. So those are, those are the major changes.
And Mayor members of the City Council, in terms of our ordinance, our code, the, the major change for our code is that we're simply referring to state law rather than incorporating all those changes in state law into our code. So that, rather than, than specifying, you know, repeating state law, we're simply saying you will comply with Section X of the government code. You will comply with Section X of the government code. Because these laws are changing every year, and we're having a hard time keeping up with our code with the state law, we simply are referring to state law. And with respect to density bonus, unlike the ADU, there is no flexibility. The state's simply saying shall, shall, shall. These, and these, these regulations apply to major developers, not, not to single-family home property owners. You know, these, these are for apartment buildings and multifamily development, so they have a little bit more say up in Sacramento, I think, in terms of lobbying, and so these regulations are shall. We have very little flexibility. So again, we're just, we're just, you know, we're just identifying state law, incorporating it into our code, and moving forward.
Okay. I want to get back on point and clarify, this is a public hearing item, so any other questions or comments of staff are on the report before we open the public hearing? Okay, Madam Clerk, is there anyone wishing to speak on item 3B regarding density bonus law?
Um, yes, Mr. Nicholas Dibs would like to speak, but I also want to let you know that the City Council did receive a late email from Cesar Corubius, the Executive Director with the Kennedy Commission, and they did, that letter will be forwarded to you. Unfortunately, it is addressed to the Mayor and City Council of the City of Pointe du Port, but I believe the content of it is related for the City of Garden Grove, and that is to support affordable housing in the city. Mr. Dibs is here to speak.
Uh, Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name is Nicholas Dibs. As I mentioned under the, my comment for the hearing under, under 3A for the ADUs, we have an affordability, housing affordability issue. Before this council, you've had different people from Rise Up Willowick and other individuals speaking about the lack of affordable housing. So obviously, according to Omar, you're, you have to pass this, but I'm, I'm just speaking out in favor of more affordable housing and whatever the council can do and to direct staff to make sure we provide as, as much affordable housing as possible. And the question I would have is can we go beyond the law and require additional affordable housing units beyond what the law mandates, so are the ordinance, state law mandate? So if the council has the option of increasing or directing staff to have an ordinance to increase and provide more affordable housing than what's minimal, minimally required by the state, is that an option? So that's one question I have. But I am in support of affordable housing, and when you take up the issue of developing, eventually developing the Willowood Golf Course, I hope you'll keep that in mind to increase affordable housing as well as keeping green areas and parks. And as a teacher and an educator, again, I'm in support of 5A, and you have an email that I sent earlier this evening in support of 5A, which is the U. Commission. Thank you.
Any others, Terry?
No.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues, questions, comments? Motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, these, these would actually go to arena numbers, these type of developments, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
This is, yes, that would be correct.
And, you know, that, I, I think we all understand there's a need for housing, but, but some of these concessions are really, really crazy. You know, we, we give major parking concessions in these developments where literally there's nowhere to park, and, and I get the intent is to kind of force people into, you know, using more public transportation, but let's face it, that doesn't ever happen. It's wishful thinking, and so what we end up with is parking nightmares on those concessions. Not to mention the setback concessions, you know, we give, we give concessions on that. I just want to make that really apparent, this is not just a golden Easter egg, there are sociological issues associated with this, and I just wanted that to be known.
Thank you. Any others?
I'll move to approve, Councilmember Kim Wynn.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is John O'Neill.
Hi, John.
Uh, just a question for the attorney, I mean, just like the previous item, is there anything that we can tweak in this and by tabling it for two weeks, I mean, is there anything we're missing? I know we all were, hey, this is just pointing to state law, but as we know, you know, it's not always in, in our best interest, but, I mean, we got to abide by the law, but is there anything we, we've missed or we need to look at? Or you're saying no?
On this one, Omar, on this one, I really don't think that there is anything else I can find. All of, all of this statute is mandatory, and in fact, the law says that we can be less restrictive. In other words, it says minimum, we can, we can be less restrictive and so provide more concessions, but not provide less concessions. And if we were to require more affordability, then we have to provide more concessions. Again, this law is pretty structured and pretty closed in, in terms of what we can restrict.
Okay, thank you.
Omar, I think, yeah, go ahead, Tuha.
If that's the case, that, well, based on what Omar said, that's the case, then I just second it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, any further comments?
Uh, yes, this is Councilman Bowie, before I vote, I just want to say that, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned because for the past three, four years, I have heard so many distress requests on residents in Pauling Lake, near Chapman, and on Chapman, near, near, between Hester and Harbor Boulevard, also on Galgora Boulevard because of the people in the apartment condo units surrounding it, just flooding their parking and create a lot of issue for them. They also threaten the people in, in that neighborhood if they do not get their way impacting on public street. So I, I, I am not in favor of, of this ordinance. I understand it is the state mandate, there's nothing we can do, but I'm going to abstain my vote just to oppose to the state legislative for pushing this irresponsible amendment on our resident.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigum?
No.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
I change my vote to no.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
I abstain.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
The only way I have to protest, no.
Mayor Jones?
Yes. What was, can I ask everybody to mute, please? Thank you. What was the vote count on that?
Um, I, Councilmember Deidre Wynn, what was your vote?
Yes.
And Councilmember Klaufenstein?
I abstain.
That's three yes votes, with Councilmember Klaufenstein abstaining, and Councilmembers Brightigum, Bowie, and Mayor Protem O'Neill voting no. The motion stays.
So, um, so just like, great, so what does that mean? So what does that default back to then, or what happens next?
Well, it, it.
It doesn't go away, it just defaults back to whatever the state.
Well, it defaults to state law, our code is not compliant. We, we do clarify the requirements of the restrictions, which we still impose as conditions of approval of the development, so we, we are addressing those as conditions of approval. One of the things that we're able to address in this ordinance, by ordinance or rather than conditions of approval, is the fact that you have in some jurisdictions, for example, San Francisco and Berkeley. We, we do clarify the requirements of the restrictions, which we still impose as conditions of approval of the development. So we, we are addressing those as conditions of approval. One of the things that we're able to address in this ordinance, by ordinance rather than conditions of approval, is the fact that you have in some jurisdictions, for example, San Francisco and Berkeley allows developers to, to use Section Eight housing to comply with the low, with the affordable housing at the same time. So they double dip. And in this ordinance, we're preventing double dipping so that a Section Eight voucher cannot be used for the household that rents an affordable unit. So we don't allow double dipping, which increases the amount of affordable units in the city. We impose that as a condition of approval, but I think it would be better if we had it in the ordinance. But other than that, like I said earlier, state law is pretty structured and strict on this. So it doesn't change much.
Are we shooting ourselves in the foot in any way or creating an even worse consequence by not approving it in, in some capacity? Or is it, doesn't matter?
This is Omar. A couple of years ago, it was an issue when we were trying to enforce our ordinance and, and then developers were complaining that our ordinance was not compliant. And so we stopped enforcing our ordinance. So we no longer look at our municipal code. We, we simply look at state law and enforce that, which is why the proposal that is before you is simply to refer to state law. So by not adopting this ordinance, we just continue enforcing state law and continue to ignore our municipal code.
Councilmember Keanwin, so are we allowing for double dipping in section, for section vouchers? Or is that in the state law as well? And we're good on that front?
That is not a state law, but over the last few years, we have, like I said, we, we impose it as a condition of approval on the development. Like I said, this is for major multiple family, multiple dwelling unit development. And one of the conditions of approval is that in the affordability covenant, the covenant stipulate that Section Eight, you know, the Section Eight housing provisions that we have in this proposed ordinance. So all we are doing is codifying what we are ready to require as a condition of approval. We are unique in that sense in that in other jurisdictions, they do allow double dipping.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to items for consideration. We just have one item tonight, item four A.
Item four A is authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Erb Seaver Motorcycles for the purchase of nine police motorcycles. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, the city council is being asked to authorize the purchase of nine police motorcycles from Erb Seaver Motorcycles using a competitively bid contract conducted by the city of Santa Ana. The recent Santa Ana contract will provide the city with a low bid price based on the larger buying power of our neighboring city. The total cost is almost $360,000, with the cost for each motorcycle at almost $29,000. The purchase will be made using fleet management, using the fleet management account, and there is no impact to the general fund. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions of staff?
I move to approve, Councilmember Keanwin.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Portem O'Neil?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us on to matters, and we do have a couple specific items actually listed. So we'll go on to five A, which is an update on the 2020 pavement management program and pavement condition index. Who's taking that one?
Mr. Murray is here to give a report.
Hi, Bill.
Ms. Palmeroy, do you wish to introduce that, or?
Sure, I can do that. I can do that. Update on the 2020 pavement management program and pavement condition index as requested by the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As requested by the city council, staff has prepared an update to the city's pavement management plan that was presented last June. In general, the plan analyzes the city's pavement and provides a condition rating, which is used to determine a repair method and finally determine a cost for the repairs. The pavement condition index is basically a grade, like a school grade, of the city's pavement with 100 being brand new, 70 being an average acceptable condition street, and below 40 being a failed pothole ridden street. The update highlights two scenarios. The first one presents the results of keeping the existing budget, and the second scenario provides an estimate of funds required to maintain the pavement condition at index 71. Scenario one will result in the pavement condition failing or falling to a rating of 56 in about seven years. The results of the second scenario indicate the city will require to spend an additional $17 million per year to keep our streets in about the same condition they are now. The question that, that comes from this is how did we get here? And staff basically points to attachment three, which shows a decline in our streets funding for the past 12 years or so. The primary component of the mission and funding are, are federal funds. The state did pass Senate Bill One, the gas, gas tax, the additional one, to address this, this need because we're, throughout the entire state, pavement is in distress, and the state did recognize that and pass that tax. The city is also addition, is allocating additional funding from our community development block grant to help as well. Currently, staff is researching and implementing new technologies to extend the life of our pavement projects in, in an effort to make every, every cent count. These technologies involve the use of new additives like kevlar and new construction method, methods, including the use of crushed aggregates sandwiched in the pavement layer to provide additional strength. Staff will continue to seek out and implement new technologies and methods to extend the life of our pavement. Finally, staff will continue to look for additional funding sources, and will establish a funding plan for the 2021 to 2024 budget. We still also have hopes that the federal government will provide highway grants in the future as well. Staff's main purpose for all of this is, is to do our best to keep the pavement in an acceptable condition. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Mayor Jones?
Okay, just to be clear, this is not an action item.
No.
Go ahead.
I had asked after bringing this back because it was, I believe it was under consent a few meetings ago, I believe in June. And I didn't felt, I didn't feel that we took the appropriate time to go through the impacts that this would have. And so I requested for it to be presented during council at a future date. So I want to thank Director Murray for bringing this back and going through it a little bit in detail. I also want to thank staff for allocating CDVC money to this to, to help, you know, maintain our rating of, at 71. I don't know that with the funds that we have dedicated to this, that this is actually what will occur. I have a feeling that this condition will only get worse. I do want to thank Public Works for trying to get creative in, in how to do more with significantly less. And then I would encourage our council to, moving forward, as we, I mean, we didn't have a retreat this year, but moving forward as we work together, hopefully to ensure that Public Works has additional funds. However, which way we do that, whether that's advocating for more grants with our grants, I mean, from our congressional members, advocating with our state legislature, legislators to request that they put more attention on this because I, I have a, Public Works does an amazing job, but our streets are in poor condition. I've heard Councilmember O'Neil, you know, talk about District Two, and some work is being done there now, but I'm sure there's other streets that still, you know, are not in great condition. And I know that I've heard other council members from other districts mention this. So clearly, it's a problem. And I don't think that we're doing, we're not giving it the best attention to, to, to really mitigate this problem. So I wanted to make sure that this report was brought back so that we could draw some attention to this and hopefully in the future, think about how we assist this and improve our street quality.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment real quick? John, O'Neil?
Go ahead, John, yes.
Yeah, this is one of my things that, you know, is frustrating for a council member. You know, we have the highest gas tax in the nation, almost double most places, and yet our roads are rubble. And I, I give kudos to our Public Works because they do a great job with, with what they have to work with. And every time I ask Bill over the last four years, I need these streets done, I need these streets done, he says, John, I don't have the money. I said, well, we got to find the money, so I'm going to try to find the money somewhere. But we really need the state and the federal government to pony up to help us. We have a lot of taxpaying citizens here that are getting shortchanged on their roads. I literally have streets in District Two that are almost rocky roads. It's ridiculous. So this is a serious issue. We need to all look at it as we move forward. And it's just a big issue, and, and we need to get more money from the state and, and the federal government, so that's it.
Mayor Klaufenstein here. I just, I want to echo my councilmember colleagues and their sentiment. Obviously, Public Works, they, they do so much. I know I've called and talked to them so many times about a pothole here, a pothole there. Man, they're out there within 24 hours, sometimes hours after I've called, and they're filling them. But we know long term, we need more, and that, that only lasts for a certain amount of time. So anything we can do to direct funds and find funding to help with this infrastructure need is, is very important.
Mayor, may I, please, Tua?
Go ahead, Tua.
I just want to echo the same thing is I just want to recognize Public Works for doing a great job, especially there's several requests within 24 hours or even less that for some of the work orders and now the public works have been expedited and working on it, especially on the bike trail that allows constituents very happy that things get fixed right away. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I just want to give kudos to Councilman Wynn for, for bringing this to the forefront. This is probably one of the biggest issues, other than public safety, that, that we as council members deal with. People are always complaining about the conditions of the roads, the, you know, degraded conditions in many cases, as Councilman O'Neil talked about. You know, we really need to focus some additional resources to Public Works for the roads. And I'm, I'm hearing that seems to be a pretty unanimous sentiment on, on our, on our dais. And we really need to focus next year and pre, in the next few years at least, to, to really make an impact on that in any possible way that we can.
Good. Anybody else? All right, that's no action item again, so let's go ahead and move on to item five B.
Item five E, five B is to provide information for city council consideration on expanding the Parks, Recreation and Arts Commission to include youth commissioners, establish a separate youth commission and/or other youth advisory committee programs. And Mr. Montanes is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. Tonight, I'm here to share information requested by city council regarding the expansion of the Parks, Recreation and Arts Commission to include a youth commission or establishment of a youth action committee. Staff gathered details from 12 local cities to get a better understanding on how high school aged youth are involved in advising council and/or establishing a youth program for the local youth community, community. Staff found that of the 12 cities, only two have formal youth commissions. These youth commissions were comprised of two to three representatives from each local high school in their respective cities. And the commission's main goal was to advise council on topics related to youth in their community. The remaining 10 cities have what we, what we would consider an internal city program facilitated by the Community Services Department in which numerous youth members would be a part of, of a youth action committee. This committee would then meet to discuss teen related topics, but also organize teen related events for the community. These youth action committees would also make recommendations to the city council on an ad, as needed basis. After discussions with the 12 cities, city staff feel in order to maximize participation of a, and, and success of a youth commission or committee, it is recommended that the Community Services Department create a youth action committee. Currently, the department oversees the Garden Grove Community Collaborative, which is a formal coalition of partners from multiple community-based organizations. Representatives include the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove, Migrant Education, Garden Grove Police Department Liaison Division, Olive Crest, Magnolia Park, and Buena Clinton Family Resource Centers. The Garden Grove Community Collaborative is in the process of establishing its yearly goals and willing to establish a youth ad hoc committee with the ultimate goal to have a youth action committee. A youth, a youth ad hoc committee would create the initial bylaws and the processes for this youth action committee, as well as identifying needs, recruiting, recruiting youth, and developing goals for the committee. The short-term goal of creating a youth action committee is to establish meetings in which groups of teens could share resources, discuss youth issues, and help develop programming for the teams of Garden Grove. The long-term goal is to ultimately have a working group of youth leaders from different areas of the city. And then the ultimate goal is to have a youth action committee be ran by the teens with staff guidance, giving them the voice, and giving them the voice to share with council topics and/or concerns as needed. After evaluating any fiscal impact, the Community Services Department could absorb the staff hours for the creation of the, of, of a formal youth commission or the development of a youth action committee program at this present time. This concludes my report, and I'm, I'm available for answering questions.
Thank you, John. Colleagues? Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I, I brought this forward for a pretty specific reason. Over the years, I've heard over and over again, the need for a youth commission, not a committee, not a, you know, anything less than a full body commission where they have agendaized meetings, the, the minutes are kept, they're noticed. You know, I, I think that's, that's an important part of any, you know, to, if you want to make this legitimate, make the youth voice impactful, I think you almost necessarily need that. I'm, I'm concerned with the recommendation of the committee only because it, it was, seemed very limited. I mean, we have so many other venues for youth that aren't really addressed in those few, four or five groups he talked about. You know, we have Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, we have youth sports leagues, we have so many other venues, not to mention the schools themselves. So I, I think that is kind of a limited thing. I, I would prefer to see the Parks Commission in, include the youth advisory function in theirs. I think that's also the easiest way to do this. You know, just to basically include those duties as part of their duties that they already have. And anyway, I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Who's next?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, John O'Neil, I'll comment.
Go ahead, John.
I kind of like the idea of a, a committee other than the commission only because of the more people that would be able to get involved. You know, a, a commission might be seven people that get to serve for a year, whereas a committee, you could have kids coming in and out, and you could have more, you could have 30 or 50 people involved possibly. So, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not the end all of it. I haven't studied it, but I, I know I, I enjoy the input from the youth, and I think the more voices we have, the better. And I was worried about a commission because of the, you know, the underage issue and the more staff time and the, being the ridge, very rigid about it. I like the, I like the concept of an open committee to where you could have members. coming in and out and, and more dialogue with staff and then present to council. So that's just my input. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Clarification.
Hold on. Everybody's gone at once. Let me, let me go with George for the clarification bit.
Yeah, the idea wasn't to actually make youth commissioners. It was to provide a body for the youth to come and be heard. So, you know, the idea of putting a 13-year-old kid in, in a suit and having him making decisions, that, that wasn't the concept. The concept was basically to have a legitimate body that they can go to with their concerns, their issues, their suggestions, and get that effectively communicated to the city.
Okay. Thanks, George, for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Who wants to go next?
Hi, Mayor Jones. Councilmember Kainwin, can you hear me?
Sure can. Go for it. Uh, you there? Can't hear you again now.
Councilmember Kainwin, would you like to unmute?
Uh, sorry, I, I'm having audio issues, so I can't tell if you guys can hear me or not.
Right now, we can.
Hello?
Right now, we can hear you.
Okay, cool. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure. So I, I want to thank Councilmember Braden Bredeham for bringing this forward. I, you know, I, I will say that initially, you know, being the City of Youth and Ambition Youth Commission and Youth Committee is something that I've, I've had lingering in my brain and I think I've had this conversation with other council colleagues. But I, I will be 100% transparent that the reason why I never did was there was this kind of creepy element that I found and made me uncomfortable for requesting it in the sense that, you know, individuals that were asking for this committee was not our youth. And so I kind of just let it fall out. So I'm glad that you brought this forward. I would particularly feel more comfortable for the safety of our youth if it was a committee where they wouldn't have to adhere to public meetings and be susceptible to public comment and interacting with folks who maybe, you know, they may not feel comfortable with or have safety concerns. So that's one thing I'd like to point out. I'm in favor of the commit, I believe with the committee instead of the commission. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, I, I've spoken to the team about it, is that I, I've been getting several requests about murals. And I know that the city doesn't have a formal mural program and I know other cities in the county do. So I was hoping that this committee could take that on, you know, initially starting out with city properties and in soliciting mural projects, obviously within some parameters, creating a policy so that we can have something that's going to be representative of the city. And then hopefully it could expand to include local businesses who would offer up their walls for murals, again, following a policy that has some sort of structure so that we don't have protests coming out regarding these murals. So that's something that's truly beautiful and representative of our community. I think that would be a great project for them to work on, given the fact that most of the folks contacting me about mural projects that I'm directing staff to happen to be used in our communities. I think it would be a great project for them to lead. Hopefully, my audio did not break up. You guys got a little of that. And those are the, my comments.
You said it clear that whole time, just so you know. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Um, I think obviously having a committee of sorts is fine. I personally like the idea of it being under the GG Collaborative myself. I had an opportunity to sit down in one of those meetings before. It's a very diverse group. It's a great conversation. These are great active groups in the city. So something within that, I think, makes sense. As far as murals and art, I think we welcome that as a city, but I think that would still have to go and fall under the umbrella of the Parks, Recreation and Arts Commission. I was a Parks, Rec and Arts Commission for a while. And so I do think that they would be kind of that final voice in terms of where that art goes or if that comes to council or how it is. So I think that would have to be fleshed out. But obviously, I think there's a lot of room to see where this could go and, and just see what kind of involvement or interest there is.
Thanks, Steph. Who else? Okay, so we got, for starters, is this, oh, this is listed as an action item. We've got a, a little difference of whether it should be, whether the title, youth, should be incorporated into the Parks, Recreation and Arts Commission as a commission, or whether this should be taken separately as a committee. So that's kind of one item on the table. I guess that's primary. I think that, that the murals and concepts of sort of a committee to review murals is maybe a separate discussion from this item.
Mayor, members of the city council, or my son, the city attorney, I just want to point out that under the Brown Act, if you formally form a commission or committee, then that body would become a Brown Act body. So if you're leaning towards creating a separate body, I, my suggestion is if you don't want it to be a Brown Act body, that you simply provide direction to staff and not take formal action. So that was my only comment as to the, the Brown Act requirements.
That might be a good way to kind of multi-step her into this, too, is, is start out that way and see how it goes and see how it flourishes with the informality of John's group sort of heading that up as a committee without triggering any Brown Act violations, without formalizing it as a commission. And then it could always be expanded upon or re-categorized later. Colleagues?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, George.
With, with, you know, simply giving those duties to the current Parks and Rec Commission, you're avoiding any Brown Act violations anyway. You've already got the commission established. It's already noticed, you know, public hearings and whatnot. You know, I, I think that's literally the easiest way. And, and it also goes towards the art issues. You know, they, they could be making decisions in that regard. But, but, you know, I'm not married to any one particular i-idea here. So, you know, I, I go along with whatever the majority of you guys believe.
What do you guys think? Anybody else? And we're kind of drilling in on the decision of adding youth to the existing Parks, Rec and Arts Commission as a component of that existing commission versus just sort of informally giving direction to community services to start forming this committee separately.
Mayor Jones, this is Councilmember Kainwin. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I had to switch to computer audio, so I kind of missed a little bit of what was being discussed. I, I tapped out during Councilmember Cloppenstein's comments, so hopefully I'm not reiterating points that were already shared. I would just like to reiterate my point that I, I think that we should have a separate youth committee that the Community Services Department oversees. I would like to have them put forward for council to approve a mural policy for them to oversee that, as well as other initiatives that they think are important for them to participate in. I believe that they mentioned events and programming and things like that. I, I would also encourage staff to ask them what they would like to participate in and at some point, bring that back to council so we're aware and we can kind of provide any guidance or, you know, additional information or approval of what we would like for the youth committee to oversee. But I, I would really encourage that we have it as a separate committee and not as a commission and for the safety of the youth that I imagine will be underage.
Uh, thanks, Kim. Steph, can you, can you reiterate your comment specifically about the murals?
Yeah, my, my comment was, I mean, I, I understand, and I think as a city, we're very, we, we like the idea of art and murals in the community and so forth. But as a former Parks, Recreation and Arts Commissioner, that was kind of always under that umbrella, murals, art, and so forth. So I think it needs to stay that. If the youth committee had an idea for a mural or had an idea for art in the community, I think they would take that to the Parks and Rec Commission. I don't know that that's something that should fall under their jurisdiction.
Got it. Thank you for having me. Councilmember Cloppenstein, reiterate that I missed that part.
And having a separate committee would, they could recommend to any of the commissions.
Right.
Yeah.
I would just like to, maybe it's in partnership with Parks and Rec. The reason why I brought it upon this particular committee and I discussed it with staff as a possible idea was because I'm getting several email requests from various youth groups and just random youth residents that are artistic and want to participate. I believe a lot of them are, you know, going through other cities, particularly in Santa Ana, they have a thriving mural program that they're working on and that you see murals all over that are representative of the community. And so I, I don't, staff, when responding to these emails on my behalf are not real, there's no real direction and there's no real assistance that they're providing as far as how to start this. So I'd like to see a formal policy and program that perhaps they could get involved with. And if that somehow is in conjunction with Parks and Rec, then I'm all for that. But I'd like to see something more formal. And because right now, this is something I'm hearing a lot from youth particularly, I'd like for them to be involved in that process.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is John Montanes, the Director of Community Services.
Hi, John.
Yeah, one of, one of the things that-
Thanks for the back-up, actually, colleagues.
No problem. One of the things that we could look at is we have a monument policy that was adopted, I would say maybe three or four years ago. And, and what we can do is incorporate additional language to include murals, mosaics, of that sort. And currently, right now, the, the monument policy, if, if somebody is interested in doing some sort of monument at a park or at, at one of the city-owned facilities, it, it's kind of vetted through our Parks and Recreation Commission, and then it's sent to the, to the city council for final approval. What Councilmember Kainwin was mentioning is I think we can work, work something in to that policy to where we can have this committee kind of being, anytime there's, there's a, some sort of request for, from the youth to have some sort of mural, we could have the youth committee be involved as part of the process that then would take it to the Parks and Rec Commission for final approval, which then would come to city council. So internally, I think we can, we can, we can work out that, that process. It doesn't necessarily need to be an entire policy that is, that is incorporated inside, into the committee. But internally, we can make it to where our, the Parks and Rec Commission would, would request that the youth committee actually overs, or, or has some sort of say in, in any, any application or anything that is related to youth. And then it's brought back to the Parks and Rec Commission for final approval. So we can work those angles out easily.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, George.
Just one last point. You know, I, being on that commission 20-plus years ago, when we did have a youth commission, some of the major things that would come forward at that time that I can recall was, you know, there was a big growing need in the time for the, at the community, there was a big hockey growth in the, in Orange County at the time. And we didn't have any like hockey rings or stuff. And I remember that some of the youth had come and suggested that, you know, handball courts were becoming archaic and really nobody uses them anymore. And so why not, you know, move some of the handball courts and build a hockey rink for them? And, and that actually ended up happening. You know, there's a few things that, you know, sometimes we as adults, we, we're not kind of keeping up with the hip trends that the kids are wanting or the, the needs that the, the, the youth want. And so, you know, some, those are some of the kind of things that, that come up. And, and that's why I think it's an important, if it's a committee, if it's a commission, you know, okay, I, I, whatever you guys feel. But, but I, you know, I just think it's an important thing that we do and, and, and maintain, not just give it lip service, not just have it for a year and then disband it. And lastly, this can't be limited to just a few youth groups. This has got to be open to every youth group in the city. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, sports leagues, you know, we can't just limit it to a certain few groups that we currently work with.
Uh, Councilmember Brad again, this is John Montanes again. So the idea would be, the, the groups that I mentioned earlier are part of the collaborative. And so what the idea would be, we would create from, from those groups that have, they have vested interest in some of the youth programming here in, in the, in the city. So we would take members of those, of those organizations to create an ad hoc committee that would just help establish some of the guiding principles for the actual committee. For, once we have those guiding principles, the actual, the, that ad hoc group would go out and then solicit youth from all, from all types of organizations, like you mentioned, Boys and Girls Club, I mean, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, youth leagues, anybody who, who would be interested in being involved in, in this, in this committee. So it's not just limited to those groups.
Yeah, but, yeah. And those, but even those initial groups are very limited. You know, the ones you mentioned, they're, they're not representative of the entire city. There are certain areas that they are. But, you know, I, I really think it's important that even the initial outreach needs to go beyond that small group of people you talked about.
Hi, this is Steve. John, just from a, within the spirit of trying to help us achieve kind of a wider net of engagement with the youth, to bring forward ideas throughout the city, what's, what's your recommendation on which way we go? I mean, I guess on one hand, we could add the word youth to the Youth Parks, Recreation and Arts Commission. And that wouldn't change anything in terms of the composition of that commission. It would just add that. The other way is under the, you know, under the committee structure, you know, you, you just bring this in with, within the context of all the groups that you're already working with. Do you have a recommendation on which way is more streamlined within the spirit of trying to help council achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve here by opening up for more engagement from the youth?
Yeah. So again, to get just to clarify, I think with the committee, there's more of a proactive approach of getting out there and, and, and then trying to engage the youth with, with the actual Parks and Rec and Arts Commission, including the word youth, you know, that is, is more just relying on the youth to come in and, and allowing them to just make comments as they, as they wish. But there's nothing right now that says that they can't do that, even though the word youth is not in the Parks, uh, Parks and Recreation and Arts Commission. They can, they can still come to public comment for, during our commission meetings. One of the things we could work on is getting, getting that information out to the community and the youth. And it could be, and it can be done through the youth action committee and letting the, you know, members, uh, you, you, high school members in the community know that, you know, if they really want to have a direct voice to a commission, then they're welcome to come to these commission meetings. Nothing, nothing prevents them from doing that. But as far as my recommendation, I guess, would be for being a little bit more proactive in what we're doing. And, and, and because the collaborative is, is right now really kind of engaged in doing something like this, would be to go through a kind of youth action committee.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Colleagues, any other questions, comments, or somebody want to move something forward?
I'll, I'll move the motion or the recommendation of city staff.
I'll second it, Kainwin.
Great. Okay. Looking forward to seeing this come about. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Bredeham?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloppenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kainwin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. Great. Matters from council members. George?
None, none from me. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Oh, yeah, just a couple of things, you know, for the public out there, you know, we, we get emotional, or at least I do, when these issues come up about the ADU situation and things like that. But, you know, we're, we're tired of, of, of people that don't live here telling us what to do. And it's frustrating. What's the purpose of local government if we can't make decisions for our local government that we were elected to do? So that's the frustrating part. that we were elected to do? So that's the frustrating part. Other than that, uh, I want to wish my wife a happy, uh, wedding anniversary. We celebrated thirty-four years of, uh, marriage over the weekend. We've been together over thirty-five years. Without my wife Sylvia, I would not be able to do the things that I do every day in my work, uh, my daytime job and also what I do for the city. I love what I do and it wouldn't be possible without her. She is my life partner and I love her so much. So, thank you, honey. That's it. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, honey. Too hot.
Happy birthday to, um, to, to, to your wife, John. Um, and, uh, just want to say that, that today, the second day of the, uh, for all the students welcome back for, with the distance learning for Garden Grove, um, University School District. Just want to welcome them. I know it's going to be very tough and difficult for distance learning, but hang in there. Um, and, um, and that's all I have to, thank you.
Councilmember Bowie?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello? Okay, good. Well, uh, I just want to take this opportunity to, um, you know, send a kudo to our police department, now police officer. Today we learned that, uh, there was a child that had, uh, been, was in the process of drowning and, uh, police have responded in time and was able to, uh, have a pushback. And, uh, he or she now is, uh, in the hospital. Uh, we do not know yet the outcome. The child is in critical condition, but, um, um, you know, we wish the best and hopefully, you know, CLH will be able to overcome that. Uh, I'd like to take this moment to point out to the public that, uh, our police officers have been working nonstop. Uh, they go many, many miles beyond their duty to, uh, keep us safe. And not just in term of, uh, keeping us safe from criminals, but also from incident like what happened today. The child, the babysitter was just stepping out to the door, entering the, the front door for only a minute. And when she turned back, the child already slipped out into the backyard and fell into the, uh, jacuzzi. Hadn't it been for our police officer to arrive in time, uh, another life would be lost senselessly. And that bring up to, bring up a very critical point that we do need to have a lot more, uh, officers. The number of officers should not be based on, uh, the percentage of the budget, but it's more in term of how many people in our Garden Grove, uh, should have one police officer. Our population had been growing tremendously, uh, over the past two decades. From, you know, low one hundred thousand to now probably already exceeding two hundred thousand resident in Garden Grove. And yet, the number of officer have been relatively the same, uh, you know, ten, twelve, uh, maybe even fifteen years ago. It is very important that the public understand that, uh, we need to have more officer. Someone posted on Facebook that if the state releasing a lot of criminal, uh, tasks and they are no longer being refrained from stealing, uh, um, robbing, robbing people, then why would we need more officer? I believe that it is contrary to that. The more criminal are on the street, the more we need, you know, the, the, the more number of officer that we need. Unfortunately, I understand we have, our city have, you know, a limited budget. But let not forget that our officer have done, uh, have went many, many miles beyond what they, they, what their duty called for to keep us safe. And therefore I would like to have a kudo to the man and woman in blue, you know, our officer. I also would like to, um, you know, have to ask staff to report to us that for many, many years, we have been planning to revamp our aging police headquarters. I would like to see, you know, uh, I would like to ask the chief and our city manager to report to us the status of that, uh, project. Unless we have a good and, um, safe, uh, place for our police officer to work in. God forbid, and if there is a seven point O earthquake, that all, very old building may not sustain the earthquake. And, uh, that would be, put our public safety at risk. So I think we do need to make sure that that project is on track and that we are not going to derail it. Uh, it's had been more than a couple of years since I got any update from staff. So I would like to ask our chief and our city manager to take a look at that and, uh, you know, give us a briefing in term of where we are going with that. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Stephanie?
Uh, nothing for me tonight, I think.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, sure can.
Perfect. Um, a cup, just three brief comments. First, I'd like to ask staff to look into a traffic concern that's been brought to me by a couple residents in the area of Lewis and Garden Grove Boulevard. Um, driving off of Simon, I believe it's Simon Street, there's a large stretch of trees, um, right by a bus stop as well, where cars park on both sides of the street, making visibility ver- potentially dangerous for folks, for folks coming in and out of that street. Um, if we could just kind of see, uh, have staff to go out there and check that and see what possible mitigations we have. I don't know if cutting down those trees would cause a stir or more problems or if, you know, figuring out if parking there is allowed or not. Um, but if we could look into that, that would be great. Um, next, I'd like to thank City Hall for making itself a survivor safe haven. We have placed flyers on our doors that provide a code word. If someone who's experiencing sexual assault says this code word, staff will reach out to the National Sexual Assault Hotline at eight hundred six five six four six seven three. I would also like to thank the G.G. Chamber for joining us in this, uh, campaign and would like to request that our local businesses also participate if they are willing. I have a stack that I'm happy to, you know, drop one flyer off if you are willing to put one up on your storefront or by your register. And I know that requests have been made to the City of Tustin or will be made to the City of Tustin, Irvine and Colston Mesa to join us in this effort. And lastly, I'd like to ask staff if you could please have, um, a presentation from the R.O.V. regarding, uh, what elections will look like in Garden Grove in November. Um, last, I know we had five ballot boxes for the entire city. Um, I didn't think that was acceptable back then. And now, given this pandemic, I think that's even more so inadequate. So if we could have them give us a presentation about what elections will look like in November, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you. Those are all my comments.
Got it. Thank you very much. Um, city manager, comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, councilmembers, the only comment I wanted to make is that, uh, you may or may not have seen that the League of California Cities is, uh, hosting their annual conference again, albeit this will be a virtual conference. Uh, it's October seventh, eighth and ninth. It would have normally been at, uh, in Long Beach, but it'll be a virtual conference, uh, this year. So I'll be reaching out to all of you to see, uh, if you want to participate in that conference virtually. Uh, we will probably have a staff person or two who will also be participating. There's always good information that comes out of that, best practices. So if you're interested in, uh, getting signed up for that virtually, it does take some time. It's a three-day conference. Let me know, but I'll also be, uh, contacting you directly to see your interest. And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, legal counsel, we had a closed session before. Anything to report out? Or do we have any need for any additional closed session?
There is no reportable action out of closed session tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you all for joining. And with that, we will stand adjourned for the evening. Thank you very much.
Good night. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Night, guys.